Stream going, which was a giving us a problem for a few minutes at nine oh five and I'll call a meeting to order and I'll ask Commissioner Goddard if he'll give the invocation and Commissioner Harvey if he'll lead us in the pledge. Commissioner Goddard.
Okay, if you bow your heads please. Lord, thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity to reach out to our constituents. Lord, it's a strange thing for us. We ask that you be with us. You help us to make good decisions. You ask, we just ask that you help keep our community safe and we ask that you be with others and help them as they go through this, Lord. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you Commissioner Goddard and Commissioner Harvey. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as stated in the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion or changes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it and motion carries. The chair will recess the Board of County Commissioners meeting and open the Port Authority meeting. Is there any public comment on Port Authority items? Are there any commissioner discussion on Port Authority items?
I have none, sir.
I have none.
Okay, with that being said, I will close the, adjourn the Port Authority meeting and reconvene the Board of County Commissioners meeting and move into public comment. Laura, do you have any emails other than the one we received a few days ago from Mr. Hoteling?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna read the sentence here and then we'll move into that. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberation about the matters of which the board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. The public was encouraged to watch on YouTube and send an email in advance of this meeting to boccmeetingcomments@putnam-fl.com. Please include your name, address, and phone number. I think we received one from Tim Hoteling. I'm gonna read it to be part of the record. It says, "Good evening. The new venue allows time for staff commissioners to prepare answers to citizen inquiries, leaving me hopeful to become better aware of the status of some things." Number one, please comment on the status of the investigation of contracting irregularities associated with the retirement of the Public Works Director at AWA Paving, specifically the stop work notice correspondence dated August 27, 2019 states in accordance with subsection 2-104 CS Putnam County Code of Ordinances. Please be advised that the final debarment determination hearing will be held on December, on February 25, 2020 during the regularly scheduled B O C C meeting. I do not recall any department, any debarment hearing. Please alludicate. Number two, concerning the legal services budget amendment, please explain if I am comprehending correctly that legal services via, via full-time, excuse me, attorney cost taxpayers budgeted cost $174,429, yet we are receiving full legal services for $66,000 annually. Please explain the added value of the $184,29 cost to taxpayers. Is, is there any chance you amend the, the agenda item cover sheet to include the type name of the department who signs? Who is this person? Number four, agenda items stating council approval is required following the Chamber of Commerce agency's component. Tourist Development Council grants for various activities hopefully bring folk to Palaca for the benefit of the county. Please identify the provision ordinance law policy for process, for the process of commissioners will be placing approval. Explain the following. Putnam County Tourist Development Council in their March 11, 2020 meeting made the following recommendation which requires county commission approval. Number five, unclaimed monies. There's serious money here, not $10 for some prisoner as in the past. Please provide oratory of the person requesting this action detailing how the funds came into the county possession and what efforts were exerted to locate the actual owner. I would think that, for example, the North Florida YMCA could be easily located allowing recovery for the $95 and why a half page of $95 amounts for crying out loud Rosers Oil, the contractor fuel provider for the county and they just, and they didn't ask for that odd $75. $14,421 seems large enough, a number that unless did John and you, Jenner, Hazelova, would want their money back. What is their certificate number? 2015 003395. I look forward to these answers. Okay, I know that we usually don't go down this, but because this is these rabbit holes, but because this is a virtual meeting and a starter one, I'm gonna try to answer some of those questions today. And so, the first number one, which is about the AWA paving and the, I'm gonna ask Rich to take that one. Rich, if you would answer that one.
I apologize. You're breaking up just a little bit. We're talking about the.
Yeah, we're talking about number one on the email. Please comment on the status of the investigation of AWA irregularities associated with that project. I was understanding that you were gonna take that one this morning.
Yes, sir. And we have, we have our investigation for the most part wrapped up. Simultaneous to that, there's an attorney for AWA that has made a public records request and it's logical that we have to comply with that public records request before we went forward with the hearing. So they had requested a continuance of that hearing and they had waived their right to apply for any other bid during that time period. And when that happened, that gave them up to the next meeting date. So we have that basically ready to provide to them. Ms. Young and I have been talking through that and have the final product ready to go. And after we send, send the quest or the compliance with the request for the public records request, we'll send a copy to the commission as well.
Okay, thank you, Rich. I appreciate it. Only legal services, number two, I'll take that one. Legal services, our current legal services are $66,000. What this doesn't say on here is we also have an attorney for the codes, for the code system, the ZBOA and planning commission that's not included in this amount, that's $30,000 a year. So it is $108,000 less and it's part of the overall plan that Mr. Suggs has been working on at this time to redo how we use legal services. At this time, we're planning on continuing with the same service we have now unless the commissioner change, wants to talk about it or do whatever. So that's the $174,429 that's on the consent agenda is what was budgeted for a full-time attorney and all their expenses that went along with that. So that's why there is a savings at this time in that, on that budget line, which has to be moved over to pay for the service we use now instead of the, the employed, the employed attorney. If they're, and number three, you know, if they want to start asking the people to print their name under their signature, that's all right by me. The Tourist Development Council, there is a, a, there is a letter that they have to fill out that justifies that, that the TDC has to justify how they feel like that will help. I think Deputy Administrator Reynolds has been working with the, working with the TDC to come up with the exact verbiage they need because it was an audit flagged item. So they're trying to make sure that they meet the audit, audit item. And the unclaimed monies were, were answered by Susan Frank from the clerk's office in a long email to, to Mr. Hoteling. So hopefully that will take care of that. Basically explained where the money came from and where it is and what happened. So are there any questions about that at this time from any of the commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Will.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before you go to public comment, I received an email and a phone call from Kim Walther. She texted me right before the meeting and said that she's not able to, she was wanting to be able to go in life and type in a public comment. She has a concern that's been ongoing. Mr. Reynolds was supposed to have this actually as an agenda item at this meeting, but it didn't happen. So she has a derelict vessel, it's a floating homemade houseboat with no propulsion that we discussed several times in the past. The state of Florida has said it's not their problem. This thing is basically sunk at the end of their dock and is producing, making a public nuisance and hazard. She's requested that we consider taking up her offer to disassemble the boat and put it in a dumpster if we will provide a roll-off dumpster and not make her pay for the dump fees. So she tried to get this in this morning, apparently was having issues on getting on for whatever reason, but she wanted me to bring this up.
Okay, thank you Commissioner Rawls. I'm gonna turn that over to, I think, Mr. Nimitz. I believe there's a certain thing that we have to go through and, and it may be Mrs. Young needs to answer it, but there's a certain, I think I'll let Julie answer it if she will. There's a certain procedure that we have to go through and I'm almost certain that we can't just start pulling boats out of the river and dismantle them.
She's saying, "Don't do all the work if we'll provide a dumpster owner."
I understand completely, Mr. Rawls, or Commissioner Rawls, but I don't think we're allowed to do that. Julie, would you chime in for me, please?
Yes, sir. And Mr. Reynolds may have more information because I haven't been involved in this at all, but there is a very strict process to get a derelict vessel deemed derelict from the FWC and get grants to remove it. But I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Reynolds because I do believe he has been involved.
Okay. This specific item is, is not a registered vessel. Since it was never registered with the state of Florida, it doesn't fall under the guidance of the state and FWC. This is something that we as a county can deal with via our own ordinances regarding what are called floating structures. And I had a conversation with Commissioner Rawls over email about this and was planning to take it to the fish, the next fishing fund advisory committee so that they could weigh in on utilizing fishing fund monies to be able to, to put in place a way to address floating structures as well as the derelict vessels. Because the derelict vessels program is what you were referencing. So this is something that we need to look at developing a countywide ordinance regarding floating structures. FWC officers sent us a, a long list of resources to, to point us towards Florida statutes and whatnot where we have the authority to do this.
Okay, Matt. So in your opinion, can we do what Commissioner Rawls is requesting right now? And, and if we were to furnish them a dumpster that they could dismantle this and put it in the dumpster, we could go pick it up? Or do we have to have an ordinance in place that allows us to do that first?
I think we're gonna need to have an ordinance in place, but I'm gonna need Mr. Commando to take a look at all of the information that FWC sent us because I don't know if we need to have an ordinance in place regarding due process or something similar to that since it's technically somebody's property. I haven't had enough time to do the research on other ordinances from other counties and how they handle things that are considered mooring fields where you can allow floating structures to be moored and things like that. So.
Okay. I'm on, I'm on board with Commissioner Rawls. I think we should go on and look at that because it's gonna come up in the future again. And so if you would continue looking into that and possibly, you can't talk to us all except when we're in a meeting, but if you could possibly keep up, keep Commissioner Rawls in the loop of where that's going and he could stay in contact with the lady that reached out to him. And I would be very interested in trying to do something like that if we could get it going.
For clarification, I could. This, this vessel is actually pushed up against their dock and sunk right on, right up at the end of their dock. It actually caused damage to their dock three years ago during the storm. So that, it's not out in, in the waterway off the dock. It's actually pushed up against your dock. That's why I'm so concerned because it has actually damaged the dock once in the past and that hurricane seemed coming up. So anything we can do to expedite this, I'm sure we.
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to do right now, Commissioner, is help you expedite this as quickly as we can. But as you and I both know, it's the government.
Yep.
So it's gonna take a little longer than what we would wish it would take. But, so Matt, if you, if you'll take time and reach out to the attorney, to our attorney, Colonel Commando, and find out, find out what we can do about getting an ordinance in place or whatever, if there, if we can do that. And if you, like I said, if you'll keep Commissioner Rawls in the loop, maybe at our next meeting, if it's, if we could get an update on that, please.
Yes, sir. Making notes for next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that in mind, the, I'm gonna move on. There's no more other public comment that's been emailed in at this time, Laura?
No, sir. There's no more.
Okay, then I'm gonna close public comment and I'm going to, to go to item five, which is the employee request regarding item two of the county personnel policy. Terry, are you taking that one?
Yes, sir. I'll take it. This was a, as you remember, we came back to the board some time ago with some concerns about policies that may or may not have been adopted by the Board of County Commissioners. This is one of those policies that we had no record of that had been adopted. We have since, Ms. Parker has since been doing some further research. There's some old files and the former director's office has found that this was one of the policies that had been approved by the Board of County Commissioners. This policy states that in order for a county employee, I'm gonna paraphrase here, to seek or run for public office, needs to have the permission of its department head, its county administrator, and the Board of County Commissioners. So, so we're coming back today as a, as a way of bringing this to the commission for transparency reasons. Mr. Reynolds and I and you, Mr. Chairman, were going under the old policies. I had given him a letter of authority to, approval to run and seek office. Now this new ordinance requires just not only the county administrator, but also the Board of County Commissioners grant permission as well. So we're here today to seek that permission for one of our Board of County Commissioner employees, Mr. Matt Reynolds, of course, everybody knows, is seeking the office of the clerk of the court. So we need, just seeking an approval motion to grant Mr. Reynolds that permission today.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I think sooner than later, and, and I have no problem with us approving this today. I think it's a travesty if we hold back any of our employees to run for office. But, but I want to say this. I think that we need to go from a starting point soon. Adopt a, adopt a, a document of our personnel and say, "This is it from this forward, going forward." Because it seems like things keep getting dug up that we didn't know existed. And I think, like Julie ended with the purchasing thing, let's start with a process and let's move this thing forward. But, Mr. Chairman, I have no problem allowing Mr. Reynolds or any of our employees to seek office when they feel like they've been led to do that. Thank you.
Commissioner Harvey, I'm in total agreement with you. I think it should be rewritten. There was some, some confusion during this process. Terry, would you mute your microphone, please? There's a, there has been some confusion in this process and the reason why is because, if you remember back, we had one, one employee policy that we thought was not valid that had been changed without board approval. And then what Laura Parker actually found was, is that the current version had been, while it hadn't been approved by the board, the board had given the administrator the authority to change the personnel policy. So I'm in total agreement with you, Commissioner Harvey. I think they need to start from one end and move to the other because those two policies are real different. So, but I think what are, what we have at hand today, are we gonna allow Matt Reynolds to be employed with us while he's running for clerk of court? I highly recommend that we do. Our, our current budget officer is leaving on the end of June and it's pretty critical that we have him in place at this time if possible. So anyhow, Larry, would you, or Commissioner Harvey, would you make that a motion that you're okay with Mr. Reynolds running for office?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I thought I made that kind of explicit, but that's okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we allow Matt Reynolds to run for public office.
We have, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it and motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. We'll move on to the consent agenda and we'll, I'll start with Commissioner Pickens. Would you like to remove anything from the consent agenda, sir?
I have none.
Okay, I'd like to move to Commissioner Harvey.
I have no items, sir.
Commissioner Goddard?
I have none.
Commissioner Rawls?
Aye and jay.
Okay, for everybody, Commissioner Rawls said aye and jay if you didn't hear. The next one would be, the chair will entertain a motion for all the items on the consent agenda with the exceptions of aye and jay. Have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Eyes have it and motion carries. All right, we'll move to item I. Commissioner Rawls.
Um, we've got a recommendation from TDC to approve the, the grants for this budget here. One question I have is, we have well over a million dollars in TDC and I'm just wondering why it is that when the TDC meets, they're limited in what they're allowed to give out. I attended the meeting and, you know, the, the members are strained in trying to give out as much money as they can to different groups. And some groups, for instance, the young professionals asked for $15,000, but we're not able to get there, but the money was available. And, you know, obviously, we're not gonna be moving forward with the festivals that we had in mind. But, you know, I just think that we really should have a meaningful conversation at some point about the tourist development. The contract is well over 25 years old and I'm not sure that the way we're managing it was the best way. But I, I wanted to bring this up because if you look at how little money we gave out for these tourist development events and how much money we have available to actually help them bring more people in, which brings in more TDC dollars and benefits our small businesses, which we'll be discussing later, I'm sure. I just wanted to, wanted to, you know, discuss this and see if we can maybe get this as an agenda item at a, at a future meeting in the very near future to discuss tourist development itself and what we're doing.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Rawls. Is there any other commissioners that would like to have a comment on this issue? Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Rawls, for bringing that. Clearly, I spoke to Dana yesterday at the chamber and had some conversation with her. She is, I can't put words in her mouth, but she would like to jumpstart our economy as we go forward. So I think we're gonna see some big plans coming from that very, very soon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And on that, Mr. Chairman, I move the item I be adopted by the board.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt item I. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it and motion carries. Item J, Commissioner Rawls?
I just, I want to get a grip on what, how long we, I, I don't have a problem with extending the, the chairman's authority under the circumstances, but at what point are we gonna have a conversation about when we're gonna start ending? The federal government's looking at ending the emergency status. State's looking at it. At some point, we've also got to start looking at the benefit of our businesses. I know that we're not gonna, we're not gonna jump right back in where we were a month ago. We have gone way down a rabbit hole. There's no doubt in my mind. But every day that this extends on is painful to our citizens, but also it precludes us from being able to do our, our work as well in a regular manner. Right now, we're having to be virtually and the public can't participate like normally. So I'm just wondering if, if there's any thought on how, how far down the road we're gonna take this. Are we gonna look at the middle of May, the end of May, you know, right now?
There's no way of knowing that yet, Commissioner Rawls. I mean, the extending the emergency for Putnam County every Friday for another week affords us the additional money that right now the EOC is being funded at a 75% level by the state. And if we don't continue moving that forward along with the state, then we'll have to start funding any costs ourself instead of only at 25%. So.
So I guess that you, my question also is, what, what is it really costing us right now? I know that we have people that are working till, I see emails at six and seven o'clock at night. Are we taking on a lot of burden for overtime? Are our salary employees being paid their regular salaries? Are they being paid overtime on top of that? I guess that's, that's also part of my concern is we are having to shoulder 25% of the burden and this is gonna be extremely burdensome at the end of the day. I, I was privy to a phone conversation that involved the leading cities the other day. They are writing a letter to say that they themselves consider themselves small businesses and would like a piece of the small business pie. And so all this money that's coming out is gonna be touched by a lot of hands. And at the end of the day, I really think that we're gonna, we're not gonna see that much money, but we are gonna shoulder the burden of it. So whatever we can do to reduce that will, will be beneficial to our taxpayers.
I don't disagree with that whatsoever, Commissioner Rawls. It's just that we need to, we need to continue our emergency situation or we're gonna be funded at all on our own. So that's the number one thing that you have to do is, is declare a state of emergency and keep that state of emergency in action. As far as when somebody starts opening up, there's only a handful, excuse me, there's only a handful of things around here that we've actually closed down. The governor did most of it through his executive order. So the only thing that, that we really closed down on our own were the county offices with limited, very limited access, the parks. And I'm probably missing one, but most of it wasn't done by us at all. We have to abide by the directive from the governor. So we haven't closed down boat ramps yet, even though there has been some, some discussion on it. They haven't been able to convince me as of this time that there, that that's gonna commit a serious problem with contamination because somebody puts their boat in the water and goes fishing. So I understand there's a little bit of hanging out at the, at the sandbars, but even having been on the policy team at the EOC with the Health Department Administrator Suggs for the last over three weeks now, almost four weeks, the, I haven't seen where one single case has been tied back to somebody going boating and parking at the sandbar. I don't think it's a good idea that they do it and they should practice social distancing, but I don't think this is big enough an issue at this time that I'm willing to close the boat ramp. So anyhow, the, the main thing, the main thing we're asking today, yes, Commissioner Harvey, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. To answer the question, I think we're gonna take, we should take the lead of the president and our governor at this point. And we, as we're meeting remotely right now, we can spring into action as you see fit to call a meeting. If, if they decide to start opening things up at the end of the month, so be it. But I think we should continue the practice that we're doing now. I feel very confident in your leadership and the things that are being done in the county. I know we're all getting frustrated. It's kind of like after a hurricane, you want to get out. But truly, the numbers are looking like they're coming down as far as statewide. And I think we should just follow the lead of the president and of our governor, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Would someone else like to have discussion or make a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion that we move forward.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion in multiple seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it and motion carries. So that takes care of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, so Commissioner Harvey?
I have my mute on when I said aye, so please let the record reflect I said aye, okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda would be item seven, the clerk of court, Clerk Smith. Do you have anything for, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief, but I did want to mention that since the last meeting, we had the comprehensive annual financial report submitted. You all got a copy of that. It really is the, kind of the historical perspective of the finances up to the date that the report is ending to, which was the last fiscal year. I wanted to mention that you all should be congratulated on the job that you did to make improvements to the reserves. These particular times that we're going through demonstrate why it's valuable to try to keep reserves. I would suggest that over the next month or so that some serious analysis should be done by your budget officers and our finance department in collaboration to analyze the impacts of revenue that'll be coming in. Fortunately, you know, our general fund tax dollars that come in through property taxes being paid seem to be holding steady where they should. But there will be some impacts as it relates to fuel tax, sales tax, those types of things that do become state sharing revenues back to the counties. And we would just want to make sure that we're up to speed with any reductions in those or, well, there will be reductions. with any reductions in those, or, well, there will be reductions, but what those will be, what those impacts are and then what steps we would need to put in place to mitigate any of those differences from what currently is in the budget. So, your finance office stands ready to work with your budget folks to continue to look at that and make the analysis available to you so that you can use those in your decision making as you move forward in this budget year. And with that, that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tim. The, we'll go from that into appointments. I'd like to start with on the contractors, building and trades examiner's board. We have a residential building contractor who has sent in a, an application to be on that board. His name is Aaron Gill. I have a copy of the application to turn in as part of the record to Sarah. I'll get it to her right here, Sarah. And so, I would like to nominate, because this is basically an at-large board, I would like to nominate Aaron Gill for the residential contractor on that board.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. I'd also, on District Three, on the Waterways and Trails Committee, I'd like to reappoint Ken Mahaffey for, for another term on the waterways and trails. That does not take a vote because that's a District Three specific nomin, or appointment, so I'll, I'll nominate, or I'll actually appoint Ken. And now for other appointments, we'll start with Commissioner Pickens.
Yeah, it's not on here that I see, but I believe that Frank Bush has resigned from the Fair Authority Board, and I want to commend him for his many, many years of service to that board. And Laura, did Wayne McLean has filled out an application and is interested in that board appointment? Is that correct?
Yes, sir, he did.
Okay, I want to nominate Wayne McLean to fill the vacancy of Frank Bush on the Fair Authority Board.
And that is a District One appointment.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Does that require a vote or is that, that's just a district appointment, right?
Probably not.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for pointing that out, commissioners. Always be the first to admit I need a little supervision from time to time. So, with that, that was, he's been appointed as District One Representative, okay? Thank you, Bill.
I have the canvassing board, one appointment. Do you make that? I received an email, and I'm trying to pull it up, from Earl Bellinger. He's inter after them, serving on every.
I've, I've received one too. I was going to bring this up and I was going to bring this up as part of the, at the end of this, but what we've determined is, best we could tell, and Rich, please help me here if, if you determine that I'm misspeaking, we reached out to our county attorney and, because Charles Overturf drew competition this time around, or the, he's a, he's in a, he's not an appointed member of the board. He is a member of the, of the canvassing board. So, taking his vacancy or replacing his vacancy on the board now that he has competition in the, in the supervisor of elections race, the, it has been determined by our legal counsel that either, that I have the authority to appoint a commissioner and a commissioner only, but if we don't have a commissioner, then it has to go to a circuit judge for appointment. So, basically, Buddy can't do it, I can't do it because I have competition. Commissioner Pickens does, does not have competition, but if he drew a competition, that would be, that would put it ahead, behind the ballgame. And Commissioner Harvey has previously stated that he just really didn't want to be on the canvassing board, that he was going to be actively involved in campaigns. And unless that's changed from this point, I don't see where we have any other choice right now other than to ask the district judge to appoint a replacement for the supervisor of elections on the canvassing board. So, that being said, I'll certainly open that portion of the floor up for conversation.
Got a question.
Yeah.
Qualifying ends next, next month for petitions and then, was it June for cash? I don't think the canvassing board needs to get until July. Would it be prudent to wait until after June to see if Mr. Pickens draws an opponent, assuming he wants to be on it?
Well, my only, you already have a commissioner on it. Right. My only concern, Commissioner Rawls, was the current supervisor of elections reached out to me and said that there were some things that they needed to look into the middle of May. Now, you're on the board and I'm not, but that's what he said. They were going to have something they had to do during May. I don't know if it was training, I don't know what it was, but he said there was something that y'all had to do during May. And so, if we appoint Commissioner Pickens, I certainly have no problem appointing him if he's willing to do it. My problem is, is that if he draws an opponent, then we're going to be back at the same stage we're at right now. And whoever comes on board to replace, certainly one of the most knowledgeable members about what goes on at the canvassing board, then we will be behind in the game. And the, I don't know how long it'll take a jury judge to appoint somebody, so that, that's why we're talking about this today, really, is basically if Commissioner Pickens wants to try it, that's fine, but, and Commissioner, or Commissioner Harvey wants to reconsider, that's fine. But other than that, according to our counsel, I have no choice but to send this to the, to the district judge for his, for his appointment. Yeah, Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. And my position has not changed. I feel like elections are very important and should be one of the highest things that we do. And me being involved in campaigns, I just feel like it would taint the image of it, so I'm going to again step out. And maybe the best solution is the chief judge to find an impartial person to do that at that, that time.
Okay. Commissioner Pickens, I see you, you're muted.
Okay, you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would be willing to serve on that, on that board, but as I agree with, with you, is that if I do draw an opponent at the last minute, then we'd be behind an eight ball even more. And I know that Commissioner Rawls has been through some classes, you know, to prepare himself to be a member, and I have not had those. I would be willing to, but I'd be willing to do it if the board sees that that's the direction that we want to go.
I certainly have no point if you want, if you want to try and do that, Commissioner Pickens, I'm willing to take the risk that you don't draw an opponent and that you would be able to serve on the board off, along with Commissioner Rawls. And if I'm understanding correctly, according to our, Rich Commando, our attorney, that it would be, that we could appoint you. Is that right, Rich, as a commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, so Commissioner Pickens, that's up to you. Do you want, go ahead, sir.
I have a question. So, it doesn't, it has to be a commissioner or it has to be appointed by a circuit judge? Is that what you said?
Yes, sir. That's what the opinion of our attorney is, is that after reviewing the statute, that it either has to be an attorney, um, excuse me, it either has to be a commissioner, of which I can appoint that commissioner to, or with the ratification of the rest of the board members, or it has to go to the chief judge for him to appoint somebody, that I'm not allowed to, to appoint someone as a backup like I am with the other spot, which is the Commissioner Rawls's spot. I appointed a backup who is not a commissioner, and that's legal, but because Mr. Overturf is a solid, is a different type of member on the board, he's a member by statute, I may, maybe, instead of a member by appointment, which is what Commissioner Rawls is. And that difference, if I'm understanding correctly, is what the difference is between us appointing Commissioner Rawls and the chief judge having to appoint somebody to, to replace over, Mr. Overturf if a commissioner doesn't do it.
Okay, yeah, I'm willing to do it.
Okay. Well, Rich, is this something I appoint with, with, now that he's accepted and, and see what goes on, or is that something that's ratified by the whole board?
It's just as the, the chair of the Board of County Commissioners makes the appointment.
Okay, well, I hereby appoint Mr. Pickens. Thank you, Commissioner Pickens, for doing that. And I guess that if Commissioner Pickens does draw an opponent, then our next step would be to send that appointment to the chief judge for his, for him to appoint somebody. So, thank you, Commissioner Pickens. Does anybody else, Commissioner Pickens, were you done with the appointments?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Goddard, do you have any appointments?
No, sir.
Commissioner Harvey?
No, sir, I don't.
Commissioner Rawls?
I have none.
Okay, so that we're, we're done with the appointments. What we'll do then is we'll move into a county administrator's comments. Mr. Suggs?
Well, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Briefly, very brief this morning, just want to, once again, let everybody know that staff is doing a marvelous job of, of keeping us functioning here at the county administration building as well as our other outside departments. As you know, we've extended our, our, our shifting, or shift, I should say, for shift A, shift B, for an additional two weeks while we're going through this pandemic. That seems to be working out fine. We've had to adapt and adjust as, as we've moved forward, but accolades to all the department heads and those staff members that are doing everything they can do to function as well as they are during this, during this unprecedented time. Also, as you know, we've been activated at the EOC now for, I think, day is thirty-one. And for the commissioners that aren't out at the EOC, let me just say that, you know, I understand the frustration of not feeling as, as included as you normally are, such as when we're dealing with hurricanes. This is a, this is very different. This is one of those things that we're dealing with daily and things are having to be, decisions are being made daily out there. And I need to commend not only Kenneth Fosser and Mary Garcia for the Health Department, but, but the emergency management staff as well, Clint and Ryan and their team have done a great job. But I'd be very remiss this morning if I didn't take this opportunity to thank personally my chairman, Sherman Turner, who has virtually been there about every minute that I've been there. And having his leadership and, and just to have him there to, to assist during this time has been greatly appreciated, not only by myself, but also for those that are serving in the EOC. And, and one more thing is, you know, we forget sometimes that we're dealing with a pandemic. And so, we're, life has changed for a lot of us, but life has not changed for those that are in public safety. Just this past month, we had a, a situation where paramedics were needed, EMS was needed for a, a family whose father had, husband had suffered a stroke. And we sent a press release out on this, but I just also want to take this time to thank those that are still doing their job every day, even though they're faced with these concerns of COVID-19, are showing up and doing their job for the citizens of Putnam County. That's the type of individuals that we have here working for Putnam County. It's the type of individuals that we have in Putnam County, and that is what makes Putnam County so great. So, I just want to make sure we commend them as well. But certainly, you know, we're, we're faced with difficult times, but we're making great decisions and we're moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Suggs. The, we're going to move in now to county attorney's comments. Colonel Commando, do you have anything for us today?
Only, Mr. Chair, this is our first virtual meeting and I want to congratulate and commend everyone. I've been watching a lot of these meetings around our area and there are a lot of ways that these meetings go wrong. Everything from technical difficulties to people hacking in. And I think that the preparation this commission put on the front end to test it out and make sure everything worked has really shown through this morning in a, in a well-run meeting. So, thank you all.
You part of that meeting that got hacked into in Clay County?
Yeah, we heard about it.
Yeah, there was a Green Coast Springs that got hacked into.
Yes, sir. Okay, we're going to move into commissioner comments or requests. Commissioner Rawls?
Um, you know, I, I brought this up at our last face-to-face meeting and that is the, the small business concern that we've got in Putnam County. It is the government, where we know where our next check is coming from, but the small business, private sector of this county are really going to be hurting for a very, very, very long time. I, I think that we need to collectively reach out to the small businesses, do as much as we can for them. I, you, you see on, on social media, there's a lot of, a lot of pride in Putnam County, a lot of people that are, that are willing to help support the small businesses. But at the end of the day, with this, emergency is over with and we go back to work, the engine is going to be starting very, very, very slowly for a lot of the businesses that are in the service industries especially. I asked someone this morning, when's the next time you're going to go to a concert at, at Altal Stadium? And their answer was, I don't know. You know, they, it'll be a while. So, movie theaters, restaurants, those type of service industries are going to be slow starters. I really think that we're going to see a, a hit countywide and anything that the county can do to help get these individuals, help the, the federal government with the PPP program, with the EIDL and the disaster, the, the bridge loans. There wasn't a lot being put out there at the beginning and, and the response of the federal government is extremely slow. I, I'm speaking to a lot of businesses on a daily basis and so far, nobody's been funded in the county on the EIDL. So, if, if there's any way we can put political pressure on Tallahassee, to put political pressure on the White House, maybe to help get some, get some assistance down here, that would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rawls. Commissioner Goddard?
Well, I'm, I'm going to commend you. Chairman, you have really, really stepped up. You really impressed me totally. You have handled this great. Mr. Suggs, you have kept us in the loop. I don't know about all the other commissioners, but you've kept us in the loop. And Mary Garcia has also gave us information, which has been great to be able to give back to the people, because I've had a lot of concern, scared residents, you know, what's going to happen? What are we going to do? What are we trying to do? And trying to comfort them is, is our main job, I believe, right now. I usually always say, get out and see Putnam County. I'm always, now today is, stay in, enjoy your home, you know, mow your yard. But I do have a question. I'd like to know what's going on with sixty-two and twenty-nine. You know, those are two of the things that I'm concerned with, along with the animal shelter, if there's anything going on with those items.
Yes, I'm going to let, hang on just a second, Terry. I'll unmute you in just a second. I'm going to let Administrator Suggs talk about that. I know that the forest has sent a letter and reached out to me that said they were going to close down the forest, it's, to any recreational activity. So, I'm going to, at that, I'm going, I think Mr. Bauer's also reached out to Mr. Suggs and they had a long convers, or a conversation about it. So, I'm going to, let me find you here, Terry. I think, there you are. Alright, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Commissioner Goddard, I spoke with Carl Bauer last week while at the EOC regarding the forest shutting down the activities that they have put forth in their, in their, in their actions. One of the things we talked about was forest roads, twenty-nine and sixty-two. And they're working on a, a reclamation project now for those roads. I explained and described in detail that we would need those roads taken care of so that the county could move forward with, in and into any agreement that the Board of County Commissioners has given us authority to do, to start maintaining those roads. So, those roads, as of right now, from my conversation with Mr. Bauer, are on hold until after the, the pandemic is, is over. But he's very much aware of our requirements for twenty-nine and sixty-two for us to move forward. And we also had some conversation within the last month or so with some folks, I believe in Tallahassee as well. We're working back and forth with them to make sure that the agreements that we're putting forth are, are actually the agreements that are needed at this point in time. So, when everything is ready and the county is ready to move forward those agreements, we should have no delays other than the time it would take to get things back and forth between us and the state.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. I've been out there and I've talked to quite a few of them out in that area. They do have all recreation shut down. There is no four-wheeling, there is no fishing, there is nothing going on in the forest. However, their maintenance of the roads are superb. I don't know if they've had enough time or they're putting in some infrastructure out there. I've seen some cables and things going in, but the roads are open and the roads are doing well, so our residents can get in and out. That was one of my concerns, is sometimes roads get neglected and they can't get in and out. But the roads are open, but I would like to find out about that. And, and I don't want to go too far away from that. I want to find out what's going on with the animal shelter.
I can take that.
Okay.
Um, we're right back where we left it at our last meeting. We was not able to get with the doctor from University of Florida because he was told not to meet with anybody. So, we're pretty much waiting until after this thing settles down to be able to get people face-to-face together again and have a conversation about the shelter plans and all that. If you guys want, I'll send everything I have right now to Mr. Suggs. Y'all wanted to take a look at the, the floor plan, the last time we met, y'all wanted the doctor to give his blessings on it and he's not able to look at it yet.
Well, Commissioner Rawls and- Well, Commissioner Rawls and Commissioner Goddard, while I understand this is a very touchy issue, I think that this needs to be worked shot when we can get back together. And I know this, that's not what you want to hear, but nobody saw COVID coming, and that we were all gonna have to social distance and have virtual meetings. But, you know, I don't, I don't mind at all if Commissioner Rawls wants to send what he has and disseminate it to the commissioners for their, for looking at it. But, you know, I'd kinda like it, that to go to the Animal Services Committee first, if, if we could.
They've already looked at it.
Okay.
They, they like it. But I, I think we, it's, I, we, we could do it virtually. I, I can send out a PDF to everybody if you want to go to the next meeting, maybe have, have it on the agenda so I can go through. And, Mr. Turner, you, you, you know, you're gonna have an easy time looking at the floor plan, but for the other folks that aren't used to looking at them, they may have some questions or, or concerns. I think we need to do it interactively, if anything else.
Okay, I'm good with that. If you're ready to move it forward, Commissioner Rawls, I have no problem with that. If you'd send it into, uh, Laura Parsons and let her disseminate it to the commissioners, uh, via electronically. Uh, if anybody needs, uh, if it's a large set of plans and anybody needs, or a large sheet to be able to see it better, uh, we can have some made over at the Building Department for the commissioners. They have a, a plotter over there. And, uh, so if we need to, we can do that. So good. Uh, Commissioner Goddard, does that wrap up your comment for the day?
That'd do me good. I, I'd like to see that floor plan, and, and I'm glad to see things still moving on. Those, you know, I, I understand we're having to shut down a lot of things, but the animal shelter, it has to continue right on, unfortunately. And then I do know people are abandoning their pets sadly. And, uh, so I wanted to make sure that this is still ongoing. You know, we don't want to come to a stop. Anyway, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Goddard. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just got a few things. I'd like to say thank you to you, Mr. Chairman, for your leadership and, and the work that you've been doing. You know, we're gonna learn a new way of doing business here to serve our citizens. And I appreciate your leadership on that. You know, every chairman has their mark, and every chairman has their, their time to lead. And it truly is your, you're doing that, and we appreciate that. Going into that, I want to say, Mr. Smith, thank you for your comments. I truly believe that we do need to take a look at our sales tax revenue coming up. That's gonna be crucial. And maybe some of the projects that we wanted to do might not can get done. Um, you know, our resurfacing went out today. We approved that. That's gonna be good. We can probably get on that really, really quick. The other programs, we might have to wait a little while and see what our, our finances look like, but I appreciate your comments on that. I do want to say, uh, Flor- Florida Association of Counties, along with the Small County Coalition, had a call the other day. We're working on twelve counties with a population of five hundred thousand or more receiving allotment, and fifty-five counties did not. And we're looking at the rest of that money, how that could be associate, how could that be distributed to the remaining fifty-five counties proportionately? And that's being worked on right now with the Florida Association of Counties and your Small County Coalition. I do want to say, a new way of doing business, Mr. Suggs, uh, Rich, and staff and I T., you know, I greatly appreciate y'all. You know, we are open for business. It is different right now. Uh, but understanding that we did not know twenty years ago that we'd be doing work the way we're doing now, and, you know, accepting things by scan, by email, by, those things are important to keep this county running. And, uh, just because they're, they're in the book that they have to be hand-delivered, they're hand-delivered when they're emailed. And, Mr. Suggs, I want to say, you've kept us in the loop. You and I've had many conversations daily. We talk, and appreciate your leadership on that. And, Mr. Chairman, that is all the comments I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Turner. I'll start by, um, you know, complimenting, commending you for, um, for your leadership. Uh, as Commissioner Harvey says, we, as chairman, we all have, uh, certain challenges, and, and this one is, nobody saw it coming, and, and nobody's had to deal with this before. Um, I do believe that you've done a great job, and they've just spent a tremendous amount of time, uh, at your commission office and out at the E O C. And, um, I'll segue into, um, thanking, uh, Administrator Suggs for your leadership. I know you spent a tremendous time, um, out there and in your office, uh, changing, um, and, and keeping updated with everything that's going on. Uh, I know you had to, um, you know, change out schedule, and I believe they are, uh, hard as they can, um, from either home or from their offices. And, uh, business is going on, um, not as usual as the best we can. And I want to commend all the emergency people, all the staff, um, for everything that they're doing, because my, my calls to the commissioner have, have definitely dropped, but I still get them, as I'm sure we all are. And staff has been able to address each one of them and take care of them in a timely manner. I just want to thank all the different departments for all their effort. Uh, Commissioner Rawls, I agree with you. All the commissioners, uh, own small businesses or have owned small businesses, and I agree with you a hundred percent. This is gonna be a slow startup when we, when we get back to normal. We need to continue to support all our businesses in Putnam County, and, and probably especially the restaurants, um, and then the, the, um, beverage places that have a drive-through, uh, and, and try to do as many takeouts as you can, because a lot of them are, are still just trying to, uh, keep their employees employed and, and bring some revenue in. So it will be tough, and, and hopefully, uh, they're getting the information to be able to apply for the different, uh, governance assistance that is out there, and hopefully it will trickle down to, you know, to Putnam County. Um, the last thing I have is, uh, was in touch with David Gerardin, who's working with us on the Georgetown Boat Ramp Project, and he is still working, as he can, uh, with water management. He's done some water surveys. He's actually gotten in the water out in front of the property. And, um, we've made a little bit of progress, and hopefully, um, when we get this, uh, COVID over with, that, uh, we can move forward and, and see where we are as far as the feasibility of the project for Boat Ramp in Georgetown. So, again, I just want to thank all the staff, the commissioners, uh, for the work, Terry Suggs, uh, Chairman Turner, for everything they're doing. And, uh, by all means, uh, with every fiber in my body, we need to continue to pray to, um, for this to, uh, to leave us swiftly and we have a good recovery. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens. Um, the, as everybody knows, this COVID epidemic has been a different, a different animal to every one of us. Um, I believe that, uh, that we can't say it enough, that everybody needs to remain safe. This disease does not spread itself. People spread. So please stay home whenever you can. When you go to the grocery store, don't take your whole family with you. Somebody go to the grocery store. Try to wash your hands, remain social distanced, and, and, uh, and do the best you can, because it only helps our community get out of this quicker. And nobody, I believe, wants to get out of this any quicker than our commission does, all five members. So, you know, we, we want to do the best we can. We need everybody's help to do that. But, uh, with that being said, if there's no more business to come before the commission, uh, during this meeting. Thank you, everybody.